Sorry, my computer's slow this morning. Come on, you could do it.
It says it's live streaming on our end.
Yeah, it's saying it's setting up on mine.
Okay.
Okay, Vice Mayor Pro Tem, it is nine oh four and we are live.
You're muted. Chris, you're muted.
How about now? Hello, hello, hello?
Sounds good. You're good.
All right. Um, good morning. This is the Lake Worth Beach pre-agenda meeting on August ninth. Madam Clerk, can we take the roll?
You're muted.
Can't hear you.
Sorry. All right, um, Mayor Betty Rash and Vice Mayor Sarah Maliga are absent. Um, Vice Mayor Pro Tem Christopher McVoy.
Here.
Commissioner Mimi May.
Here.
Commissioner Ronaldo Diaz.
Here.
All right. Um, given that we are rather thin in our ranks, I guess everybody's out on vacation or something, or several are. Uh, do we have things that people are burning to say or ask or whatever? Commissioner May?
Um. Well, that was weird. He just showed up. Hi Ronaldo. Um. I don't know. I mean, there's a couple of things that I would be interested in talking about, but there's nothing burning.
Um.
Like for, did you, I know that you guys went to the, um. You got the, uh, presentation from Alyssa and, um. Tiana about the grant.
Correct. Well, I did. I can't speak for Commissioner Diaz.
Um, so.
I do.
I don't know if we can talk about that.
Uh, we can.
What do you guys think?
Um. Commissioner Diaz, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it looks great. Um, I don't know how much, I mean. The application is being made, right? And Alyssa, at this point, it's kind of like what I explained to Alyssa. I. At this point in the game, it's kind of just a matter of, uh, staying out of her way. So she's really good at filling out, writing out these applications and putting a draft together. And, um, uh, you know, she has a couple of months, which sounds like a lot of, a lot of time, but it really isn't. Um, on top of everything else that she has to do, so, um, but. It's really good. And if we get that, that, that would be a pretty good game changer. I think there's a lot of, uh. Good amount of flexibility that, that that grant kind of allows, that would allow us to do some pretty cool stuff throughout town.
And maybe before we go too much further, just in case anybody is listening from the public, this is a grant from the EPA. Um, trying to remember what the name of the program. It's an interesting program, environmental justice and. Uh, something else. It's an interesting department within EPA. EPA, as we all know, normally deals with environmental protection in the U.S. Um, but they also, there's been a increasing recognition over a number of years that. Um, environmental problems have not affected everyone in the U.S. equally, that they tended to have weighed more heavily on some computer. Environmental problems, more heavily on some communities than others, leading to the concept of environmental justice that says, hey, we ought to even that out as much as we can. Um, and so some of the departments under President Biden have worked hard to try to. Approach that evening. And one piece of it is looking at traditionally disadvantaged communities. And seeing if there are things that we can do to help them out, uh, that EPA can do that relate to the environment in some fashion. And, um, that's this grant. It's, we are in theory eligible for 20 million, so it's hardly insignificant. Um, and the focus that I heard, others can certainly expand and correct. Um, was to focus on things that we could do. Partly focus on things that we could do at the, um, City Annex Building that would, um. Help make it a real community center and then on also a focus on transportation, making it. Safe and easier to get to that location. Uh, others perhaps can fill in what I've forgotten because I'm sure I did.
Mr. Brown, hand up.
Uh, uh, okay. I see that Jamie Brown has had his hand up. Go ahead.
Good morning. Um, so yeah, so it's actually the Community Change Grant, um, which, uh, EPA, uh, the Office of. Environmental Justice and External Civil Rights, um, is the actual name of the grant. And, uh, what Alyssa, um, and Vaughn and Tiana had been working on, Vaughn being the, um, interim, um. Utility Director and Tiana being the Leisure Services Director, um, Historic Building Restoration for the Annex. Um, there were some drainage projects, um, energy efficient upgrades, um, which Ed would be working on, tree canopy improvements. Um, there were some enhanced mobility options we were looking at as well. Um, so just kind of a, a conglomerate of things, but as you mentioned, um. Uh, Commissioner McVoy, uh, it's $20 million we'd be looking at. And the public meeting is next Thursday, August 15th at six o'clock, yeah, six o'clock at the Hatch Building. Um, Hatch 1121. So. Just wanted to fill that in.
Thank you for that reminder that there is a public meeting component to it on Thursday, 6:00 PM, was it? Yeah, at the Hatch, uh, on like. Yeah, no, it'd be, it'd be very exciting, uh, to get it. It seems like it really would do exactly what it's intended, help out. A disadvantaged community and, uh, help it in a lot of. Imaginative ways. So thank you so much to Alyssa and to Tiana and Vaughn and Ed for. All and, and anyone else who's worked on it, but that's sort of the lead team. Very appreciative. Uh, Commissioner May, did you have some comments?
Well, I just have a question because she showed us the map of the disadvantaged community and it was basically the west side of the city. Um, it looked as if it was divided right along Dixie and, um.
It's, it's along federal, actually, the line.
Are you sure? Is it federal?
Uh, I was a little surprised too, but that is what, um, does anybody happen to have that map or recollect? I'm pretty sure it was because.
Yeah, it's correct. It's a federal highway. So it's federal highways, the boundary and then it, um.
Okay, that kind of answers my question because I was like, the annex isn't on the west side of Dixie. Um. Let me just throw a spitball out here. Okay? The Annex being downtown and with the hotel and with W Moda and with other things. Possibly coming into the downtown that is more public-private partnership, more business oriented, um, more tourism oriented, um. Would we want to consider possibly making the community center not at the Annex, making it where, um. We talked about how there's a lack of a community center up in District, um, two. And by the ball fields on that side. Now, I know there's already a building there, so that's obviously going to financially make a difference, but I just wanted to kind of spitball that out there. I just don't know if it's the best use of. Our prime real estate. Downtown to have a building where, um. It's, it's transient, not transient as in population, but it's not like a, a formal building that's going to be something. It's a rented out, whatever. Whatever, whoever rents it for this year is there. Um, I don't know. I'm just thinking. I'm thinking of the big picture and the growth of the city, and I'm just not sure that that's the best use of that building.
Well, that certainly is a, a concern to raise. I, I, somebody else could correct me, but I didn't recall hearing from Alyssa's presentation. I don't recall hearing anything about renting it out. Um, it was.
That's how they said they were going to sustain the, the grant by renting the, um, rooms within the Annex to different, um. To different nonprofits, um, and or, uh, private citizens. Because it ha- it has to sustain itself past the grant.
Uh, yeah, okay. And maybe I missed that part or, or didn't hear it or something. Um. Uh, I heard things like. Yeah. Community Center, um, com- community kitchen, uh, maker space. Things that sounded to me pretty long-term and very much oriented toward bringing. Different parts of the community together in a central location, which made a lot of sense to me. Um, I think there will be plenty of commercial type activities or more commercial business type activities happening in the downtown. Public activities and public gathering spaces. Um. Seems to me it would make a lot more sense to have it centrally located than to have it way up at the north end of the community. That'd be my thought on that.
What do you think, Ronaldo?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the intention to have, um. You know, honestly, for lack of a better word, let's call it, I guess we're calling it a community center, but, uh, I mean, I think the intention is to make that. Kind of at the center of town because if it's going to be, you know, partially used as an event space, as a small business incubator. Um, you know, you want it to be successful and closer to the downtown area as possible, basically. There's really, there's, there's a couple of examples that I've thought of, um, especially when I hear the words, uh, small business incubator. There's one, you might actually be familiar of it. It's one of my favorite examples because it's, and it's actually in Buffalo. And it's, um, uh, West Side Bazaar. I don't know if you, you know that place. Yeah, like, you know, stuff like that, I feel like is. Is incredible. And for anyone listening, the West Side Bazaar is this nonprofit, I guess, in Buffalo that. Took over this strip mall and kind of like a, um, a part of town that needed some redevelopment. And they basically set up some stalls and half of it is, uh, like stores and then the other half are restaurant food stalls and. Basically what it is, it's made available to immigrants who make it to Buffalo and it kind of like trains them. How to start and run a business legally and, and go through the process and all that. And they have a set amount of time to. Start their business in that little shopping center. And it's really great because you can. Try, I mean, I think last time I was there, you know, they have Vietnamese food, Middle Eastern food, all kinds of things mixed in. And something like that, I think would do exceptionally well in our town because as we know, we have a really. Diverse community here, and I think the potential is tremendous. Um, but in order for something like that to be really successful. It, just like any other business, you want already established traffic available to, to make its way into the, into the businesses. Then on top of that, if we include things like event space and whatnot, of course you want that to be as close to downtown as possible. But it's definitely a valid concern because, you know, we often talk about. What other area, not that we necessarily want to start a second downtown, but I think we've had discussions about like. You know, what are maybe some other areas of town that could use that kind of slight commercial mixed use redevelopment perspective, you know? I, I think we always bring up like South Sixth Avenue on how we can better, uh, provide opportunities there and whatnot. So it's, it's definitely a valid. Concern and I think a conversation to have.
I think that you just hit the nail on the head. I mean, it's. We always say that we want to bring people downtown from the not downtown area, and I just don't know the building this downtown is going to do that. We're still taking people away from where they live and bringing them downtown. And that's, I think that you're right. I think that there's so much other commercial space in the city where this could happen. You know, where you, like you said with the, um, in Buffalo, if it was a strip mall, it, it's not downtown. It's somewhere else in, within the city and it's not on our prime real estate downtown. And like, we don't need, and a lot of what she was saying was like, oh, well, mental health counselors will rent out offices and do therapy. That doesn't need to happen downtown. That can happen anywhere. And I just don't want us to commit one of our prime pieces of real estate to office space. Where that can happen anywhere and you're going to have to get the clients downtown. So it, I don't know. I've just been thinking about it since our meeting and I just don't see that space being the best space for that. But I like, I love the idea. I just, I just don't like the space.
Another cons- another consideration to, you know, is the shared use space of it because. Uh, another conversation we've had about the Annex is, and there's, there is a, I think a pretty legitimate ask about. Our, our kind of like our front-facing customer service type offices, like our, uh, you know, utility. Bill handling, uh, permitting, you know, well, maybe not permitting because that's pretty substantial, but, um. Having a desire or a need to have like our customer service, like our parking division, all that things centrally located downtown and. You know, similar to counseling service and things like that. It's hard to, it's hard to kind of say and be a predictor of who's going to bring the most traffic, but. I mean, it's kind of a similar concept. If people are coming up, coming in for an event. Or for some kind of service, then they're also already downtown. So they're going to walk across the street and maybe hang out in the library. They'll walk down, get some coffee at, you know, South Beach Coffee, whatever it may be. And like, kind of the whole. Uh, concept is if you get people there for one thing. They'll see how convenient it is to just walk downtown and that translates to dollars into the economy. And, you know, it's, it's a hard thing to predict. You never really know what's going to. Sometimes something opens and you think it's going to really take off and bring in hundreds of people a day, but, um. But, you know, the Annex is a, is a big building and, and there's potential for a lot of things.
Um, Commissioner May, what kind of uses do you have in mind for that building?
Um, well, I mean, leisure services does need somewhere to go. I do like the idea of the, um. Uh. I don't know. I just, I, I don't, I don't really know, honestly, Commissioner McVoy. I just don't know that the plan of. Rental space is the best plan, uh, just in my mind. Uh, my mind's still completely open to other ideas of what we could do with it. I just see it as. I don't know that it would help the most people there. And the idea behind the grant is to be. Helpful to the disadvantaged communities, and I just don't know that that would do it right in that location. You know, I don't know that it's the best use of that space. Um. I don't know.
Hey, um, any other topics that? Are burning on people's minds that we should talk about with the three of us? And we also have all sorts of staff resources here. Thank you.
Um, I, I have something, um. We had mentioned for our law enforcement things, the idea of having some kind of. Workshop or meeting with the, the new brass that's taking over, just as like kind of to get, you know. Get familiar with each other, but also I think would be a great opportunity just to, um. Be able to have like a discourse on, or a reminder of some of our priorities, right? Like one of my. Big priorities has always been kind of the, our waterfront, especially at Bryant Park and Snook Islands. And although we've made, um. Some progress towards resolving that issue. It's been, it's been a little slow, uh, for sure. Not, not because of. Not trying. It's been slow because of just how difficult it is in terms of a legal challenge. Um. But I think there's still a lot of opportunity there. And I think with new brass, we have, um. We have a pretty good opportunity because sometimes, you know, that brings a new perspective and they might have new ideas or a different way of looking at things. So. Um, I just wanted to kind of bring that up and wondering what that might look like. I mean. We could obviously have our one-on-ones with the new leadership and whatnot, but, um. I think maybe some kind of public workshop or discussion would be really beneficial. I just don't know what that looks like, whether it's its own meeting or if it's just an agenda item on a regular meeting.
Are you talking, what, what exactly are you talking about that you want the, um. Sheriff's Department to do along the waterfront? Are you talking about removal of derelict vessels? Are you talking about litter? Are you talking about people? What do, what do you mean?
All of it. Um, so the, pretty much all of it, right? So the, the big one is the derelict vessel. Removal. That's always a, an issue on how to resolve, but also, um, trespassing of like the overnight anchorages. Um, litter for sure is a big one. I know there's some, uh. You know, there's, there's different ways of addressing that for sure, but, um, but yeah, I mean, all of it, all some of the, the issues that we hear from. The community, but for me, the, the biggest, not necessarily the biggest in terms of importance, but the biggest in terms of I. Me seeing it as like the most difficult hurdle is the derelict vessel and the overnight anchorage thing because. Uh, I've been pretty clear that I think long-term or hopefully not too long-term, um, I think the path. That we need to be going on is moving towards a managed mooring field surrounding Snook Islands, and that would allow us to, you know, have. Some better control of, of what's in on our waterfront and have, um. Some better tools at our disposal, if you will, to, to handle that situation, but, um. But we can't really just like force that in overnight. I think there's things that we need to do along the way. Um. So, and then, you know, there's, I'm sure there's loads of other issues like I brought up at the meeting, the, uh. The potential for reorganizing our 25 crossing guards that maybe like kind of refocus them on some of the more dangerous intersections like 10th Avenue Overpass. Um, you know, there's so many law enforcement issues that every city wants to address and. And with this new leadership, they might have a slightly different perspective or, you know, a different, um. Kind of mindset. And I, I definitely would love to just to learn more about where they're at and, and what their thoughts are and, and have that be a two-way conversation.
I, I agree with you. That'd be awesome.
And, and I might expand slightly on that, that, um. Completely agree that with the new, um, captain. I'm sure there'll be some continuity because it's part of PBSO, but there might be. Some new approaches and, and he needs to hear from the community, what are, you know, and, and from us as the elected officials, what are priorities? What are things that we're hearing that are concerns? What are things that are working well? Um, I think that's also a really good. Initial meeting relative to what, uh, City Manager Brown suggested that. While we can't make any adjustments really at this late stage to this year's amendment and contract with PBSO. We certainly can get started on that for looking at a new contract for next year. Um, and again, making sure that we, we do an evaluation. It's been 14 years. Um, is the community satisfied with what's happening for, for the price that we're getting? Uh, do they see things that are working great? Do they see things that could be done better? And with that needs to get communicated and worked into the contract as much as possible.
And I, um, Mr. Brown, was it two years? Isn't it two years at 2%? So we would do a new, um, contract, not next year, but the year after? Or is it a one-year one?
That's correct. They originally came with a one-year, 4% and what we ended up, um, negotiating, um, was a two-year, uh, 2% each year.
Okay, so that, uh, to your point, um, Commissioner McVoy gives us two years to kind of figure out. You know, and to hear from the community as well.
We, we were trying to go for three because we wanted to, you know, when it comes to budgeting especially. Not knowing what is coming next year because they could come and ask for seven next year, you know, if we don't have it locked in. So. We were, um, happy to at least get two years. Three was optimal, but.
And, uh. Mr. Brown, it, is it correct to understand that, um. Though we've, we've made this agreement for 2% for two years, does that you prevent us from. Moving in this coming year to a, instead of an amendment to a new contract that would incorporate that two years of 2%. Um, there's nothing to prevent us from working on that contract this coming year.
No, not, not to my knowledge, no.
Yeah, that. That's, that's my thought, that, that it's, it's run on amendments for a very long time. It, it's time to, I hear enough things from the community of concerns of how things are, are done that. Uh, it seems to me it's, it's appropriate time for us to try to look at that and make sure that PBSO is aware of those concerns. Um, and aware of whatever's working well and that we see if they're open to any adjustments, um, to deal with that.
Yeah, and, and, and I think that's, I mean, both of y'all, that's such an important point is there, we have. Kind of a transition, one year or even two years. I mean, I think the timing is kind of good for. You know, Captain Bear did a lot of good for us and maybe, maybe the timing was right for him to kind of head on out because, um. Uh, it gave us, I think it just kind of lines up, you know, that we have. A year or two to just kind of really take a look with a new perspective and a fresh set of eyes and, and just be like, you know, what's this next? Contract going to look at, um, because. There's so many good questions and so many things that have been brought up, whether it's our waterfront properties, whether it's code, you know, PBSO taking on more code enforcement duty. Um, we have these conversations and at the end of the day. We were limited by what was in the contract and, you know. Sometimes, yeah, from the legal perspective, you, you, you want that. Ability to just, it, it's not a terrible contract. Like I'll, I'll put it out there. It's not like that. It's a bad contract or anything like that, but. Uh, sometimes you do want to put an old contract through the shredder and just kind of start new as opposed to just copying and pasting. You know, a piece here and there, um, just because. So after a while, like, you know, it's time. It's time for an update and it's time to take a, a new hard look on it. And I. I think this should be, uh, I, I wouldn't say it's necessarily like a burning issue that needs to happen next week, but it definitely needs to be. Uh, a bit of a priority since they're, you know, they're kind of new and, well, they're not new. They've been. They've been part of PBSO for a long time, but they're new to us.
Yep. Commissioner May?
Can I just ask for a question? The managed mooring field. Um. So, but, so what, growing up, okay, so I had boats on moorings and there was a little boat that drove us out to the boat. We got on the boat, we went sailing, we came back, we got on the little boat and we came back to land. So what's the difference between that and a managed mooring field?
So it's not, not much different. I mean, uh.
How do people get to their boats?
With a dinghy. So, so you would have the.
Their own dinghy or do we have dinghy boys or?
Well, that, that, that would be the thing to talk about. And I, you know, I always try to, to keep ideas like open, but, um. That would be, I think that would be an awesome goal. Like to me, if, if we had a blank check. If we had no money, you know, no worries about limit on. if we had no money, you know, no worries about limit on money and we had a blank check. To me, what an ideal managed mooring field looks like is you have the mooring field uh out there, you know, just outside of Snook Islands, maybe a little bit in front of Bryant Park. And those moorings are attached to the bottom in a way. There's really innovative stuff out there that where you can do them in a way where you're also creating like an artificial reef, for example. So there's an environmental water quality component to it. But the main idea is from the environmental standpoint, you don't want people, you know, you don't want too many anchors and anchor chains out there because that does a lot of damage, especially in our part of lagoon with the seagrass. So you want to minimize that. So there's that aspect of, of it. And then the other environmental aspect of it, which I think is like my, my dream, uh, probably a lot of people's dreams. What makes it managed is that we're managing it. And ideally somehow it's going to be funded enough that we can provide services like maybe a dinghy service. If somebody wants to more and they don't have like an aqua dinghy, then we have someone go pick them up, bring them to the dock. And then the other big one, that's probably more, way more expensive, is a, have a pump-out service that is required. If you want to stay in our mooring field, you need to be pumped out. Well, as you know, with boaters, they tend to be uh, you know, pretty free-going people. And a lot of times, a lot of boaters have the mentality of, well, why would I pay for a pump-out service? When I can just motor out to the middle of the lagoon and just flip a switch for a few minutes, uh, which is awful that that's how that works. But um, but you know, we, we, we want to be basically be get at a point where we can provide all these services, hopefully cost-effectively. Uh, Mr. Brown has had some really good ideas about, for example, like in Bryant Park, our jetty and being able to kind of extend that as a kind of a public, you know, docking system. But also being able to raise the elevation on that inside part of the lagoon so that it creates seagrass habitat. There's a lot of potential there. So um, so yeah, a- all it is, it's a mooring field and managed, meaning that we manage it. AKA, we have better control. You know, you don't have a ticket, you're not, you're not getting onto the mooring field.
So it's not, it, okay. I mean, I, I love all the ideas with the water and I honestly am concerned that, like the Sam Smith comment the other night about not being able to get access to, to the lagoon. I, I kind of agree with that, you know, like we should launch paddleboards and kayaks and
Yeah, and that would be, I think, a big part of it. Because the part of having adequate management is you're gonna have, you know, the little shack with the, the dock, the dock master and stuff like that. And, and that would be the opportunity to, you know, be able to do things like rent kayaks and paddleboards and uh have a, you know, I, I love launching at the golf course, but it does feel awkward sometimes walking across the green with your, with your paddleboard or kayak. You know, it's a great spot. It's a great way to access uh Snook Islands. Maybe not the most super convenient, um, but uh, but you know, it'd be Yeah, it's pretty rocky. Our, our part of the lagoon is just gonna be rocky and lots of oysters. But um, which is more of a reason why, you know, where our current kayak launch is, which definitely needs some love to, you know, but that's, that's a pretty ideal spot to send out some paddlers who just rented some kayaks. So if, you know, and that, that little building would also do things like sell bait and drinks and snacks. And, you know, whatever the things that uh the boaters that come to use the mooring field might need. So there's just a lot of, a lot of potential there and a lot to discuss. But there's some pretty big hurdles to overcome because we own a lot of the submerged property in Snook Islands, which is really helpful for us. Or should theoretically make things a little bit easier when it comes to trespassing, like the boats who are anchoring overnight. Uh, but the thing is, there is a line, right? So just outside of our property, which isn't that far, um, we don't have as much control there. That doesn't mean that part of the lagoon is off limits. There is a way to get a mooring field. There is a process to get a managed mooring field uh in waters like that. Um, it's just, we have a lot of ducks to put in a row.
If, if I could comment, uh, I, the ideas of the managed mooring field and both the boating benefits and economic benefits and environmental benefits all sound very good. Um, the, the comment that Commissioner May mentioned from Sam Smith, uh, if I recall correctly, he was referring to the storm outfalls and construction of a concrete wall and railing that went with that. And that was at Wellesley and Eighteenth Avenue North. Um, some of you may recall that this is something that I've brought up for probably three years now um, that I would like to see. And it was interesting to hear because I've not talked with Sam Smith about it. So um, we apparently arrived at the same thought independently. Um, it, eh, which is to have some sort of a gate in that railing and to have some sort of a walkway or slope surface or something down from the wall um, out into the water so that people can do exactly what he said, you know, very informally and locally in the community. Take a canoe or a kayak or a paddleboard or whatever, or just walk out um as I've done to, to get uh, you know, just go dip netting and get organisms for the aquarium that I have at one of the uh preschools. Um, I, I'm very much in favor of that. I know that uh Mr. Brown and I have, he's gone out and looked. We've gone out and looked together. Um, or looked independently, but looked at the same thing. And there is, there are some challenges in terms of ADA access. There's some challenges in terms of how long a slope it would take to get from the height of the wall out to down to the water surface. I don't think they're unmanageable. I don't think they're impossible. I think definitely the issue that, that Mr. Smith brought, Sam Smith brought up, access to the lagoon, informal access, just to go out there, whether you're walking or, or boating of one another low-key variety. That shouldn't be limited to just the folks that happen to own big house on the water. There, we have some location. He incorrectly stated that we have pocket parks. Um, our legal department, Christie at least, will be quick to say, oh, not so quick there. They're not a park. Those are right-ofways and they have to be somehow transportation-oriented, which is why some of you may recall that I said, well, if I'm moving a canoe from the entrance at the road to the water, I believe I am transporting something, so that ought to be legal. Um, uh, I don't know how to resolve the legal challenges, but I think the idea of making those spaces public access to the water is, should be a priority for us. And I don't think it's impossible. Come, uh, uh, Mr. Brown, you might want to speak up here. I'm encouraging to you to.
Vaughn on, on some of those are right-ofways. Um, you know, another thing that, um, you know, on some of the ones, I believe it was Wellesley, uh, was the first south of the yet Sixteenth North, Eighteenth North. Some of those uh have a substantial drop-off depending on if it's a high tide or low tide. Um, and especially the ones I, I had to kind of step across the railing and, and lean over. Um, had I slipped, it was, it was a nice little, nice little drop on some rugged rocks down there. So we would have to look and see, um, uh, we're still trying to figure that out. I'm working with Vaughn, trying to see what, what options there are in some of those locations.
And, and I can attest to having been up and down across the, the wall and onto those rocks. Um, eh, a number of times now to get to hermit crabs and other things for the aquarium. Um, yes, it, it would definitely need some, you know, infrastructure to make it work. I don't think it's crazy infrastructure. I don't think, you know, we're not talking million-dollar project here by any means, but it would take some thought, you know, for
And I know that one of the grants that Vaughn was looking into, it did, I, I believe it was Wellesley incorporated one of those that did not have a um, uh, an elevation issue.
Yeah, Sixteenth, I think, doesn't have much elevation.
Yeah, so I know they were already working on that one.
Yeah, I'm not saying all of them. I'm just saying it would be nice to have somewhat, someplace that you could.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I mean, uh, maybe the Wellesley one isn't the one, you know, and obviously we're not putting a floating structure out there because that would be um, in case we had a storm, that wouldn't work out very well.
Yeah, it, it definitely depends on the situation. Some might be better suited to have some sort of stormwater management, you know, cleanup technology or something. Um, but that's why I think it, it is important to look at. And we've talked about this quite a bit, like look at all of these opportunities or all of these spaces is as a holistic kind of system, not just one, you know, one by one. But um, it's a great question though, Commissioner May, because it immediately makes me think of there's a bit, a bit of an example, and I think, I think it's, it's a pretty good example. And I know Mr. Perry is really familiar with this place. It's a Riviera Beach Marina. That is a, a managed marina by the city. And there's this one particular section where there's like the two little shacks that you can rent paddleboards and stuff. And it's also, they built like a little uh beach area. So that's where like, if you bring your own paddleboard or kayak, that's where you launch it. And what they've done there, and granted, they're pretty lucky because they're like right across from the inlet. So they have really good water quality. But um, that's a spot where I used to water sample uh weekly. And in that little beach, I mean, I used to see so much life there between like this, when it's the mullet one, like the school's a mullet and all the little snook and stuff that hang out in that little, I mean, we're talking about two feet of water, right? And like it's crystal clear water, looks like an aquarium, and it was all built there. Uh, and it's a combination of, you know, their paid tenants who use the marina, but also a park slash public open access area. Um, so, so there's some pretty good examples out there. And I think to Commissioner McBoy's point, some of them might not be as expensive as we think they will be, especially if we rope in some of our allies like from the county and, and others that, that could help. Um, you know, help build some of, what, what we're talking about is basically living shoreline projects. And luckily, we live in a county that is kind of taking the lead on that in the state. So there's, there's, I think, a lot of opportunity here.
Good. Uh, any other topics that uh people want to raise? Either from staff or from the other commissioners?
I have one more question.
Okay, you've got one and then I see Vaughn's got his hand up.
All right, I'll follow after him.
Okay, um, going back real quick to the um PBSO conversation and uh what we had mentioned the other night as far as getting together uh with the new captain and uh new major to have those conversations publicly. Um, trying to, uh, we'll, we'll have to discuss in our one-on-ones what the best way to do that is because we have, um, just between Melissa and I, uh, we've been adding a lot of dates because we had so many different RFPs and everything out. So I was making a little list here as we went through, um. We added September ninth for the first meeting for the lobbyist selection. Um, September nineteenth will be the second part of that, which would be the selection process. We've got the Community Sustainability Workshop on September sixteenth. We've got the um Beach Property uh Workshop, or that's actually a special meeting. That's uh first of October and then the second meeting we're scheduling now. We've got the Housing Study on September uh twenty-third. We've got the Community Sustainability Workshop. We have our regular two-commission meetings, the one utility meeting. We now have added an additional um, uh, pre-agenda meeting. We also have budget hearing one and two. So we've got this list of, of, of meetings that are, it's getting quite extensive. So uh I'll get with you guys in the one-on-ones and see if maybe we want to do that. Uh, usually the budget hearings aren't too long. Maybe we want to schedule um something like this, like directly after budget hearing one or two. Because it would be nice to kind of do that sooner after, I know, uh, I believe the twelfth is Captain Bear's last day. So um, next week is when they officially do the switch over. So it'd be nice to have that not long after, after that switch and not waiting until, you know, November to have this conversation. Um, so I'll work with you guys on that, but I'm, I, I apologize ahead of time for all of the meetings that we're having to stack on to the, the schedules, but we do have a lot of work. We're about to get busy here.
Um, that, I think the idea of joining it on to the uh budget, meaning those are usually fairly short. Um, the approvals, um, that would be, that would be reasonable. Um, I think it'd be nice if, if it's possible to get Captain Bear to come to, you know, at least the beginning of one of those and we get to wish him well on his next excursion. Um, and, and obviously the introduction of the new uh captain. Uh, Commissioner May?
Um, going back to on, on Tuesday, when we did the purchase of um, or the sale of five oh one to the CRA. So when they pay us, is, where does that money go?
That is definitely a finance director question, but I know it goes, I'm not sure what fund that resides in or exactly that goes. Um, but I can give that answer for you.
Okay, because I'm thinking that if you're getting paid for the five oh one and the purpose of it is to have the W Moda project go forward, that could be a, this part of the city's portion of putting in our good faith money towards that project.
And I will confirm, but I believe that's exactly where it's going.
Okay, because I want, I want us to, we need, I mean, if we're gonna do this, and I think we really should, we need to show good faith financially and say, this is how we plan on paying for this. This is our plan. This is our goal. Yes, we're in this. Um, as a team with CRA and with W Moda.
I'll give that answer for you, but uh, yeah, the intent was to, um, we're pulling from different funding sources. And I believe that we initially have, I know the CRA is throwing in quite a bit as well. So we're, again, we're in the process right now of um updating the term sheet and all that. So we're, we're kind of in the middle of everything, so I don't have much more to give you guys until we get a little further down the line. But we're working, we're working on it.
That's all I have.
Uh, Commissioner Diaz, any more items?
Uh, no, I think that's, that's all I had for now.
Uh, staff, does anybody have anything they want added?
I needed one more comment. Um, on the uh, the annex conversation that you guys brought up earlier. Um, you know, we're, we're in the process of doing, uh, WGI is doing the overall building assessment. Uh, we were just out there with them earlier this week. Um, we are moving forward with doing the roof because we know, no matter what happens with that building, the roof has to get done right now. Uh, so we are moving forward with that. They're in the process of, right now, getting the specs and everything together, um, so we can put that out to bid. So you guys will be seeing that soon. But the conversation that's going to be upcoming is what do we want to do with this facility? And that's what you were kind of alluding to, uh, Commissioner May, whether it's something like, uh, what we're talking about now with this possible grant. Uh, we do know it's going to be a substantial amount of money to do the renovation and everything, but, you know, probably not going to see customer service moving back into that facility. Um, not sure where the museum is hoping to reside. So the overall city conversation is going to be, what do we want to see uh the future use of this building be? That's still kind of hanging out there. Um, and that's kind of uh waiting for us to get the overall assessment back to see how painful is this renovation going to be and what all needs to be addressed in, in the building moving forward. But that conversation is definitely upcoming, so it's not like there is any kind of set um programming. It's going to automatically be going in there. That will obviously be coming to all of you to, to make that decision. Does an apartment go in there? Like, would that be a portion of leisure services? Do we dedicate that to more community-oriented things? Like they're just, it's, it's a much larger conversation, but we know that we do have to address the, um, the structural uh and the actual elements, MEP, mechanical, and plumbing to that building before we do anything else. So just want to throw that out there.
Can I, can I put a little footnote in that as well? And that's um, as well as having a conversation of what to do with the building in the future. Uh, and I, I don't know what the thought, I don't really have like an idea or um anything specific for this right now. But I think if anyone does, can we also think about and talk about what to do with what's in there now temporarily, specifically the museum? Um, because if it takes us, you know, two, two years to renovate this building, I think we should be seeing what we Seeing what we can do to keep the museum going or finding, uh, you know, whether it's finding a temporary space, whatever, whatever that looks like. Um, I think if we can just kind of think about that and have that conversation as well.
I, I think that's good. Um, one thought or one question for, um. Mister Brown would be. Ho- how much, I, I, not quite sure how to phrase it, but. Uh, as we're putting this EPA grant together, it seemed like. Some of the aspects of the grant were fairly central to what we were going to do with that annex building. And so that we're telling the granting agency that, um. Hey, we're thinking of doing these kind of things and we'd like some, to use some of the grant money toward renovation of the building. If we then have a discussion that says, well, we're going to do very different things, uh, are we going to run afoul of that grant? And would it be wise to, at least through the duration of the grant, kind of stick to whatever we. Saying to the extent that we're specific in the grant, which I don't know, because I haven't seen anything written yet, but from the description, it seemed like. That building was fairly central to the concept of the grant. And I wouldn't want to shoot ourselves in the foot on a twenty million dollar grant by saying, oh, we change our mind, we want to do something different.
Yeah, so that's why meetings like, um, next Thursday's meeting are so essential. Uh, to get a public input and get an input from all of our elected body as well, um, to have these conversations going forward here to see. Cause a substantial amount of that grant would go toward the actual building itself. Um, there is a lot of work that's going to have to get done.
Right. Would it be possible as, as background or, or helpful information for that Thursday mi- public meeting? To put together just a, like a one page version of. Kind of what we're thinking of doing with that building as part of this grant. So we know. At least what the current thinking on the grant is as we go into that meeting.
Yes, that, that, that will be part of the meeting, correct?
Could we, could that be, the one page be put out before the meeting so people can circulate a little bit or?
Yeah, I'll go with Alyssa. I'll talk with her and see what the, uh, what her intent was, because she's.
I, I don't want to make extra work, but maybe, and I know that asking for a page doesn't make it less work. That means you got to boil down a lot into one page, but, um, perhaps it'd be possible. I think it'd be helpful.
Yeah, I'll go with her.
You could probably just pull the information off of each of those slides and make it into a one page thing.
Yeah, she can probably just, uh, I'll go with her and see what we can, what we can pull together. Um, I will say that a substantial amount of that grant will definitely be the renovation of that building, because there are ADA issues. There's all kinds of things going on. And we actually had our selection yesterday for the. Architect of record who's going to be taking over for the previous architectural firm who's working on the EOC and the Public Works Fleet Facility. Um, and, uh, we selected that yesterday afternoon and they did mention during that selection process that. Um, you know, they're currently working on multiple of projects, EOCs and stuff kind of all over Florida and in some other states, but I believe it was Miami Gardens. They just got all the pricing for two weeks ago. Five hundred and eighty dollars a square foot. Is what, what builders are currently going for. And we were kind of, there was like this, this collective. We have, uh, we have modified, uh, our estimates for the city hall annex to basically be. Basically right at that six hundred square foot for renovation, so we are, we are now changing some of our estimates on, based on some of that. Current pricing that we're hearing, and that was literally two weeks ago. So, um. Nothing has gone down. I'll say that much as far as construction's concerned.
Any other items from anybody? Well, um, hearing none, uh, shall we adjourn? I, I.
Right on time, thank you.
All right, um, hearing no objections, this meeting is adjourned and we'll see you in the next one.